All right.
Call this meeting of the common council in order, roll call please.
Call the room fire. Aye. Niles?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Tully? Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Here.
Elderman Tully is excused tonight. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so, we ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address, and reason appropriate.
Jumping 315, break yard court three times in a row. I got some problems with putting in this map behind my house. Man, is that gonna look. My wife and I lived there for 20 damn years, and that thing that what they're putting down is a disaster. I had a sprinkler system back there. I sprinkled that one with a golf course. I took care of it. Now they're putting a manion down there that looks like age. I wish you people would come down and look. Call me up. I'm going to Arizona tomorrow. I'm getting the hell out of here. I can't take this crap anymore. Fellas, I'm gonna have a dance stroke. Away, away. Some of you people, I'm not gonna mention anybody, some of you help me, some of you don't. That's a mess down there. That whole pond is a mess. Bill, I talked to you, I called you up, and I was concerned. I've never seen you down there. I talked to you once on the telephone on October 22nd at about 10:47 a.m., trying to get you to take a look at this overflow. It's a disaster. All I have to do, I know, thank God my wife's in the nursing home. That's what I'm gonna be headed next. It's terrible. It sucks. I hope you people come down and take a look. I called Mr. Opperman, nobody comes down. And anyway, that's it. I'm gonna stay at home more, but it looks like a mess. Come down, every time out. You come down tonight, I'll put, I got a car back, I'll drive her down and show you. It's a mess. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Hearing none. I'd like to read a proclamation commemorating the 103rd birthday of one of our residents. I, Mayor Dale Opperman, do hereby recognize and congratulate Mrs. Agnes Fremming on her 103rd birthday on November 6th, 2021. Whereas Mrs. Fremming has been a longtime citizen of Jefferson, still resides in her home on German Avenue in Jefferson, whereas Mrs. Fremming has always been a positive role model for her family and her community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dale Opperman, on behalf of the City of Jefferson and its residents, wish Mrs. Agnes Fremming a happy 103rd birthday on November 6th, 2021. And I will be proud to present a written copy of such proclamation to Mrs. Fremming on Saturday. Next, a proclamation. Alyssa, come on up, please. Recognizing the 110th anniversary of the Jefferson Live Public Library. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. As some of you may already know, the Jefferson Public Library will be celebrating their 110th year in service. The very first library was officially adopted back in 1911 in the Carnegie Building. And so 110 years later, here we are, still doing the same thing, serving the community and the members of Jefferson and surrounding areas. And we're having a celebration Thursday evening to commemorate this achievement, and everyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you. Remind the other times on Thursday?
We have a tour. You can come and do a tour of the old Carnegie Building from 3:00 to 5:00. It'll be a self-directed, and then we have a handout for people where you can tour the old Carnegie Building. And then from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll have a celebration in the meeting rooms here in the library and the city, or joint meeting rooms. And at 5:30, you'll have a short ceremony where I'll say a few words, and then Mayor Dale will say a few words as well. So everyone's welcome to, welcome to come. We have some giveaways, we have food and beverages, some activities, and some old pictures and old artifacts that you might be interested in looking at. So it's quite, quite a feat.
Certainly erects history.
Yes.
I'll just read the proclamation, and then I'm gonna share it on Thursday night. Whereas the Women's Club of Jefferson founded and opened the first library on November 7th, 1907 above Robish's Hardware Store. So let's remember Robish's. Whereas on February 28th, 1908, the Wisconsin Free Library Commission made three recommendations to the library board, one of which was to secure a library building, and the members of the promoters' club secured a site on the corner of Main and Milwaukee Streets and presented it to the library board. Whereas on November 10th, 1908, the library board offered the library to the City of Jefferson, and the common council accepted financial responsibility by creating a separate fund for library expenditures. And whereas, the library board applied for a sum of $10,000, the estimated cost of the building plus furniture, for the construction of a library in Jefferson, and upon receiving the grant construction began in March of 1911 on the new Carnegie Library, following design requirements which were approved by Mr. Carnegie. Whereas on November 30th, 1911, a gala dedication of the Jefferson Free Public Library was held with many distinguished guests in attendance to celebrate the opening day of the Jefferson Free Public Library. Mr. Brandl? It was a great event, wasn't it?
It was great.
Whereas in 1985, the library approved boom to its current location, where it continues to provide a variety of educational, recreational, and cultural resources to the citizens of Jefferson and surrounding communities. Now therefore, I, Dale Opperman, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2021, as Jefferson Public Library Day in the City of Jefferson, and urge Jefferson residents to join me in extending sincere congratulations and gratitude to the Jefferson Public Library by attending activities in celebration of the 110th anniversary on November 4th, and by visiting the library to discover what was set in motion 110 years ago by the citizens of Jefferson and Andrew Carnegie, and continues to serve the residents of Jefferson today. It's my privilege to read this, and really, I just, I think it would be remiss not to not to mention the recent improvements that the library has has made, and people that have not visited in a while will find many pleasant new improvements there.
Absolutely, yeah. We invite everyone to come. We've made lots of changes, and that's kind of what we did over the history, that's what we've done. We responded to the community and the needs and requests, and we evolve and grow and change to meet what the citizens want. So yes, everyone come and check out the library, or more than books.
Good job with positioning us for the next century.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll adjourn to a public hearing on the proposed amendment to Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson related to the rezoning of 1325 North Watertown Avenue from AT AG Transitional to SR2 Single Family Residential District. I'll call this public hearing to order and ask the city administrator to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the common council of the City of Jefferson will hold a public hearing in the council chambers of the Jefferson City Hall, 317 South Main Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin, on 2 November 2021 at 7:00 p.m. to hear the following rezoning request for zoning changes of 1325 North Watertown Road from AG Transitional to the zoning designation of SR-2, which is Single Family Residential District. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing. This notice was published in the Jefferson Daily Union on 19 October and again on 26 October of 2021.
Thank you. Alyssa, city engineer, to explain the zoning change.
The SR2 is a single-family residential zoning district. This is in our new zoning code. This district is intended to preserve and enhance existing areas of very low density, single-family detached dwellings, unlike the case for rural holdings district land use standards for the district permit primarily single-family detached residential development at an approximate density of two dwelling units per acre in a variety of related institutional land uses. This use is allowed as principal use.
Thank you. Any persons wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address and reason for appearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, move on to number six, ordinance number 9-21, an ordinance to amend Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson related to rezoning of 1325 North Watertown Avenue. Elderman, council president, Brandl, please.
I am Mayor Opperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. Second reading of proposed ordinance 9-21. The common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordain as follows. Section 1, Section 300-19B of the zoning map, City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is here and made part, is amended to change district boundaries of 1325 North Watertown Avenue from AT AG Transitional to zoning designation SR2 Single Family Residential District. Due to the length of the property description, in lieu of reading the complete text of this ordinance, a complete copy is unfilled at the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. Parcel number is 241-0714-3524-001. The address is 1325 North Watertown Avenue. The proposed permanent zoning designation is SR2 Single Family Residential District. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force upon passage and publication as provided by the law, in notification and attestation of the district boundary changes incorporated herein, the zoning map, City of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Teeter, and discussion. Any questions about the locations of the property? This was recently asked into the City of Jefferson. Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and no of your opposed.
Elder woman Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Two unanimous, thank you. Number, ordinance number 11-21, an ordinance to modify Section 204 of the Jefferson Municipal Code to regulate city parks. Elderman Young, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. An ordinance to modify, I'm sorry, City of Jefferson proposed ordinance number 11-21, an ordinance to modify Section 204 of the Jefferson Municipal Code to regulate city parks. And due to the length of this ordinance, in lieu of reading the entire text, a copy will be available at the clerk's office at City Hall, but since this is the second reading, I will move to pass this ordinance.
You have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Miller, and discussion. Questions, comments? Would you like, we have Parks Director Keller here tonight. Have anything, questions, or? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as the clerk calls your name and no of your opposed.
Elder Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to a presentation on the downtown streetscape improvements. Tonight, we have Elena and Jeff from Van de Waal and Associates.
Little bit of a book?
Yeah, we've got the tree.
Okay. That's okay. I've got a little bit of a...
Well, thank you all for having us today. Jeff Maloney, a principal designer with Van de Waal. My name is Jeff Maloney, principal designer with Van de Waal and Associates. This is Melon Bartnik, he's an associate designer, and we've been working with the city for probably 20 some years, between us, on different planning and design projects. I know it doesn't look like Alona's been working for 20 years.
16.
And most recently, we've had a great opportunity to work with Cindy, Tim, and Bill, and some streetscape opportunities for sort of a refresh of every downtown, and we'd like to present those ideas today. So we've been working over the last probably month or two, couple months, and had all kind of different options and things, and worked with our working group to come down to one supported both by city staff as well as the chamber. So the presentation you have there, I know it's sometimes hard to see these screens, that's why we printed it out, and we won't go through all the ones at the end, but there's the detailed plans at the end that you can look at after this meeting. So the planning project area is essentially Racine Streets, so north is to the top right, a block north of Racine, down Main Street, and focusing on Milwaukee and Dodge Street. Again, this, and also the Pally project, which I know you're all aware of, that will have a sidewalk as part of this, or the project, or a different edge project. So the project isn't like a complete reconstruction project. It's basically from sidewalk of edge to curb. So the idea there is replace some of the issues, or to address some of the issues that you have out there right now. You can see those on the screen. The honey locust trees have either were planted incorrectly or didn't get enough water, but the roots are pushing up on the bricks, causing a tripping hazard, which I'm sure you've heard from constituents. And when that happens, a lot of times, all we can do is throw on asphalt to try to fix it, so it eliminates that tripping hazard. But we'd like to propose a more permanent solution for that. You can see some areas where tree grates have been removed and asphalt's been put in. The bricks themselves have sort of reached the end of their life. They're a concrete brick, and I think they've just been worn down over time. So those are, those are like two of the major components. Other things we talked about in our working group are some of the streetscape elements, like the planters and the trash cans. They're a little dated, but they also are the same, so some people are throwing trash in the planters and vice versa, so we wanted to address that. You can go to the next window. So the idea is that any of these improvements that are proposed tonight would be able to be installed with the sidewalks open to mitigate or limit the amount of impact of the existing businesses. So when we looked at the streetscape concept, we, you know, we've worked here for quite a while, and we wanted to to look at a concept that would be respectful and celebrate the community. And we just had your proclamation of the historic library and historic Agnes, I forgot her last name. But there's a lot of rich history in Jefferson. You have a great facade program, a great building stock. And so we wanted to respect that and complement that, but at the same time, we've just completed this branding initiative over the last year, a couple of years, which is much more forward thinking, and we're going outside, it's vibrant, it's colorful. So there's opportunities to include that branding into the streetscape concept too, to celebrate the street when visitors come here, come here for different events, and go over your park. That's building off that investment of your logo, the J stops, some of the signage that you've already done. So the current palette of elements, of streetscape elements, the ones that are circled in blue would remain, so your historic lighting, your banner signage that's on that, obviously the bridge would remain, but that's one of the key focus elements that we wanted to take elements from and bring those into the streetscape, so bring Rotary Park in the water up to Main. The J stops, we feel like we can incorporate that branding into some of these elements. And then the elements we'd be replacing, pavement, accent pavers, the concrete pavers, planters, benches, and trash cans. So I'm gonna talk about the quick design concept. Alona will go through the elements specifically, and then we'll kind of circle back at the end. So when you look at the Main Street area, the areas in red are really the historic blocks. What we wanted to do there is introduce elements that would complement those historic facades. And then on Dodge Street, we have the connection to Rotary Park. We think there might be opportunity to kind of bring that activity up to Main Street, especially when there's events, so we have some ideas for that that we'd like to present. I'm gonna turn it over to Alona to go through the elements.
Hi, I'm Alon Bartnik. As Jeff mentioned, I've been involved with it for a long time as well. We can start with the accent pavers. We wanted to make sure that we picked out something that worked well with the historic brick that's there, not trying to match it, not something that is kind of a fake-looking cobblestone, but something that's kind of traditional, that would work well with the existing colors and historic brick, as well as looking kind of facades that complement that historic facade as well. The one that we're looking at is a flavor from Milac, and it's a heritage brown color. Also looking at the crosswalks, we talked a lot about those, what the best way to enhance those would be. Thinking that some of the main intersections have Main Street and Milwaukee, and Main Street and Dodge, that we could do accent pavers in the crosswalks in the street as well, and then other areas, maybe we need a little freshen up on some of the crosswalk paints and the other intersections as well. Existing trees, as Jeff mentioned, is one of the kind of big issues. You can see some of these photos show where the placings of the pavers, as well as the kind of metal frames around the trees. Existing trees that are there are honey locusts, and then you guys also have a few tree lilacs. So the honey locusts are the larger ones that are 50-plus feet tall and wide, and kind of outgrowing their locations. And then there's some, Japanese tree lilacs are only, they only get to be about 15 feet wide, so kind of on a smaller scale. And some of those tend to sort of lack the signage being above buildings, just kind of weight and height, so I'm gonna go to the next slide. There's some new potential trees that we're looking at could be used. Upright, more kind of narrow form ones, they're not growing into the facades. Thinking gekos and lindens for the Main Street, and then potentially some Kentucky coffee trees in upright form again on some of the side streets. Those are a little bit bigger and a little bit similar shape and form to the honey locusts, so I know that some of those weren't the favorite of some of the store owners with the little leaflets, so smaller leaves of trees and stuff like that, some of maybe those could be used on some of the side streets to complement the other two on the street. We looked at tree grates. Obviously, the areas the trees are planted in right now are not sufficient for root growth, so looking at something that's a four-foot by eight-foot wide, a larger tree grate, making sure there's enough root space and enough adequate growing material for the trees. And then we could also do, there's an opportunity in this style, a tree grate, this one from Irons, that there could be uplighting located within the tree grates. So on the next slide, Jeff was showing potential for either kind of a themed color lights that could be in up of the trees, or some that are integrated into the tree grates. Driving through downtown in my white year, I have to admit, I hadn't found Jefferson at night in a long time. We do the same, but during the day. We'll have to take a look and see from a lighting standpoint if it makes sense and that we could get the desired effect of the uplighting within the trees with the, because you guys have such beautiful streetlights already, making sure of that. So we need to go kind of through a little more detailed process to decide if that makes sense with the uplighting investment. On the block of Main Street between Racine and Milwaukee Street on the east side, there's a split curb area, so I can see the before photo, or the current photo, I should say. There's an area where it's a little bit lower outside of, right along the curb, and then we're kind of step up to where the store entries are. So a way to maybe resolve this kind of issue and tripping hazard would be to do raised planters around those trees, and then have a larger, have the planting walls kind of take up the grade between the two levels, and then have areas of sloped pavers in between that. Just a plan view of what that would look like, as well as some example images of other locations, looking at that exists. And then getting into the streetscape elements. Jeff mentioned the bridge, pedestrian bridge, we thought that was kind of an interesting, unique piece to Jefferson, and using that kind of heavy timber style and metal, metalwork would be a way to kind of bring that into Main Street. So this is a bridge, or benches that were designed by Columbia Cascade, they're on the west coast and do a lot of work with heavy timbers, so we're thinking we could do a customized length that's a little bit smaller than the image is shown here, something that would fit the scale of Main Street, and then with black metal detailing. And we're using those at the main intersection, so at Main Street and Dodge, and Main Street at Milwaukee Street, doing those in those locations.
And Alona, this is not just a bench that's just wood, it is treated, durable?
Yes, it's, yeah, but it's technically treated. I looked up the maintenance specifications and talked to the representative, and she said that there, you can, it's chemically treated from the factory and does not need any sealing, or don't recommend putting any sealant on it after the fact, after you purchase it, but if there is an issue that you can sand it down, so if somebody, if there is a nick or somebody carved into it, she said she has not had any, what do you complain about, or had any issues with it, she said that you could sand it down if you wanted to, and then you can do kind of an oil, you know, the linsey oil, it's a shirt oily type thing, if they're worried about moisture or kind of the sheen of it or whatever, but it's not necessary. And then looking at bike rack opportunities, and I understand the Grates don't have any bike racks in downtown right now, so we were thinking we could do something that was a little bit unique and different. These ones are shadow racks by Mad Rex, which is the local Wisconsin company, and they do all kinds of customizable options. So some of these were used at a library, I forget which community initially, and then we were thinking that you could do something cool with your branding, with the logo, or maybe the Jefferson J, that using the J stops could be the cutout, so I talked to the rep there as well, and there's, you can do just about anything, and they can do lots of detailed different things, so that's kind of a wide open opportunity to do something cool. And we're looking at doing one of those at this point, one for black, as well as a few in the public parking area. Other streetscape elements include trash cans and planters. So Jeff mentioned too before that the trash cans, sometimes you guys have now look a lot alike, so doing something a little more updated and streamlined that'll work well in the historic blocks as well as in the connections to Rotary Park, so that the trash can isn't the focal point of the design, but it works well. And then planters, those would also be in a black color. Trash cans, I think kind of replacing the amount that you guys have, maybe a couple at every intersection, and kind of thinking about logical areas in the public parking and whatnot, where people would have, got rid, so that it ends up in a trash can and not in the street. And the planters would be at the main intersections as well, coupled with the bench locations. And then looking at opportunity to add hanging baskets to your existing light poles as a way to add a little more color and soften up the blocks. We did some before and after photos. So this is a before image, and this is what it could look like if we add in benches and trash cans and bike rack with a J. Go to the next slide, just the two kind of mashed together, so that's the photo in the background. We talked about adding a kiosk to downtown, and so thinking that this could be a unique custom feature. Dean Proctor from our office has been in contact with a builder in Madison area that does timber framing and stuff, and they'd be interested in building something like this. So doing that wood and black metal kind of fascinating situation, so that it would be something unique that would relate to the bridge. Go to the next slide, here's that before image, and yes, that is me. I made the mistake, or the good decision to be the scale in Dean's photo, so I'm the known before photo. But this is an image of what the custom kiosk could look like. So this is the next one that's in, into the photo, and so thinking that could be Douglas fir and metal bracketing with potential interactive display. This is looking at concept plans, more concerned at the details as to what is where exactly, but we looked at the northern area, so this is from Racine Street north. The next one is kind of the central area of the project, so from Racine to Milwaukee Street.
So long, never done.
And then this is the southern block, southern section, so that Dodge Street area, thinking of Rotary Park. Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah, so those plans, there's detailed plans at the end of your packet too, that show each block by block, if you want to get into details. We went through those, but it gives you an idea of where those pavers are and those major connections. We just want to end the presentation with going back to this graphic showing that connection to Dodge Street, and what some opportunities could be to bring Rotary Park up to the street on Main Street. This is just a image board of some different ways that we might be able to add a feature or an art feature. It could be in arts, you could add additional lighting, might have some public art features, we like that canoe feature, especially if it fits into your brand. And also might be an opportunity to, you could even paint the intersection, or some way to bring in additional color into the area. We did a sketch of what we thought might work, so here's the existing looking towards City Hall there. Bringing that Rotary Park emblem that you have down there, and putting those into two tower features onto those, into those corners to say that that's kind of a gateway, and so people when they're, you know, if you're traveling here, they'll know where it is a little bit easier. Some banners with, you know, events or music or different activities that are going on, and then you can see the crosswalks. And then I think there's one more slide. We, as we were looking at that intersection, we thought, well, you know, I've come to City Hall probably 50 times or so over the last year. Hall probably 50 times or so over the last years, and I always looked at the wall, and I said, well, now that you have this branding initiative and time to go outdoors, we could use that wall and actually make it a mural, we could use that wall and project light images on there now. That's what a lot of communities are doing, they'll project light that could have events or pictures of people that are from town, or, you know, branding or activities. So that would be an option, so we just kind of photoshopped your logo onto the City Hall. And then on the last slide, that could even wrap around the backside of the building, too, with relationship to the park. But other things we could do with that wall, you know, there might be a photo op opportunity. You see where the butterfly, something that is unique to the community, a mural or something of the history with the rivers and the settlers that were here, the confluence of the rivers, which I think is a great aspect of the community. But there is an opportunity there, so we did put a budget item in, which could have more discussion, but I think that would be a great, great opportunity. We have a detailed cost estimate that we're working with Bill and Cindy on. This is just a summary to give you an idea of where these numbers are coming in, and some of this can be phased in either by street or by project type. So you have site demo and prep. The pavers and the crosswalks, some of that's the largest component of this, it's $400,000. That would probably need to either be done all at once, or, you know, bid half and half, depending on how it works, because you don't want to bring the contractors out there twice, but it is a large cost. Trees, that's mostly grates. The city was planning to purchase trees and install them themselves. The tree uplighting and conduit and new wiring for the sound system is about $100,000, so that's something to discuss. And then the streetscape elements that we presented, including the kiosk, around $150, and then the public art gateway elements around $75,000, or that could be higher depending on what you do. And then design engineering, which we think as we go to big will probably go down a little bit, but it gives you an idea where the numbers are at this point. So if anyone has any questions, we can talk specifics or generalities, I guess. Do you have any questions?
So the main failure of what we have is pavers and trees.
Correct.
And you're going to replace that with pavers and trees?
Well, we're going to replace them with pavers that aren't right adjacent to the tree, and with the tree grate. So the tree grate is four by eight feet, which is quite a large grate, so that allows for additional water to go into the tree. The reason that that was heaving is because the roots were looking for water.
My guess is the hole in the ground with adequate soil for the tree is probably, you know, maybe four by four right now, but it's not. The pavers are probably set on sand and compacted soil, and those tree roots can't grow out, which they just wouldn't kind of go up.
Right. I mean, we just want to avoid making the same mistake.
Absolutely. Hearing none, this is informational in nature, but what are you looking for, Tim?
Well, I think just a couple of quick comments. So I can generally tell you the price tag that this carries is more than the budget that we had put together, and really the reason for that is the budget really reflects dealing with the trees and the pavers. When we started this project, that's, as well as the alley. And the budget that we put together really allowed us to deal with, you know, just the pavers and the trees, and certainly redoing the alley, you know, probably the most important components. So, you know, for sure, we would have that. We just asked Jeff and Alana to, you know, take the next step and, you know, what would it take if we just gave the downtown a new facelift? And so that's a little bit more money. It's something you may or may not want to do. Personally, I favor it's been since the mid-'90s, I think when Main Street was rebuilt. That whole area, the historic downtown, really needs a facelift. So I'd like to figure that part out. I would generally say, what I would say, you should think about this for somewhat of a short while, but once we decide on a concept here, you know, then we need to open it up and get some input from the downtown merchants, downtown property owners. I would say there's been a relatively small number of people that have been working on this the last couple of months, from staff people to people at the chamber, but it really hasn't been opened up widely. But, you know, this is the streetscape concept that the people working on it favor, wanted to bring it to your attention. And, you know, we'll talk about this again shortly. And once we have a concept, as I say, then we would, you know, open it up and get the input, comments of folks downtown. Our goal is to do this the second half of next year in conjunction with the alley project, where that is turned over to us, meaning the underground lighting system, an electrical system has been put in place. So, you know, that's the timeframe. You know, I would like to think we would sort of do more than just the pavers and the trees, but ultimately it'll come down to dollars and cents, so I would kind of anticipate, you know, think about this, maybe the next council meeting will bring this back, and maybe a committee of the whole will talk more formally about this particular concept and what your druthers may or may not be.
Does anyone have any questions, or Tim? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thanks, Pastor.
Resolution number 62, tonight's consent agenda, all in one fire, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, City of Jefferson, resolution number 62. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for November 2nd, 2021 is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for November 2021 in the amounts of $429,642.47. Payroll summary for October 22nd, 2021 in the amounts of $164,394.61. Council minutes from October 19th, 2021, out of the common council. Licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. I would so move.
Who are the licenses, please?
The licenses were Deborah Lumen for Harders and Gavin Leggren for Herbies.
Thank you. Has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in arms. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye, or abstaining from the minutes if you are not in attendance.
Alden Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Which name? Thank you. Resolution number 63, resolution authorizing facilities planning study for the wastewater treatment plant. All in one, Teeter, please.
Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson, City of Jefferson, resolution number 63. Resolution authorizing facilities planning study for the wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the Jefferson Wastewater Utility is in need to undertake a facilities planning study to evaluate the long-term needs at the wastewater treatment plant, and has received a proposal for this work from Town and Country Engineering. And whereas the West, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources will require this plan to be completed and reviewed before any major work or modifications can be performed at the treatment plant, as the previous facilities planning study was performed over 20 years ago. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that adhering authorizes Town and Country Engineering to perform the facilities planning study. And be it further resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, that the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson, following its review by the city attorney. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Niles. Anyone care to elaborate on this? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye as your name is called, or if you're opposed.
Alden Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Resolution number 64, resolution authorizing engineering for well number three modifications. All in one, Niles, please.
Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson, council members, City of Jefferson, resolution number 64. Resolution authorizing engineering for well number three modifications. Whereas the city, excuse me, whereas the Jefferson Wastewater Utility looking to upgrade well number three with pumping and reservoir modifications, and whereas Town and Country Engineering provided a proposal to perform the engineering services. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that adhering authorizes Town and Country Engineering to perform the engineering plans for the well number three modifications. And be it further resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, that the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson, following its review by the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alden Brandle. Discussion?
It's approved unanimously to recommend the council by the finance committee.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number 65, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, or if you're opposed.
Resolution 64.
64, I apologize.
Thank you. Alden and Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Team unanimous, thank you, all entertain a motion, return.
Aye.
Lars, Niles, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Return.